But, uh, but anyway, I think you gotta take it, you gotta take it as we get closer to that date. Uh, but the most important thing would be what, what are the guidelines as to whether distancing is required anymore? And, uh, you know, cause it's, it's interesting, they allow a hundred percent capacity, but require social distancing, that, that doesn't work, that doesn't make sense.
I'm sure the mayor will figure it out.
Hey Louis, are you gonna be in tomorrow?
Yes, I am.
Mind if I stop down and drop something off at you?
Of course, of course not.
Any particular time better?
Um, depending on what time we get out tonight, I mean, I, we definitely, I have a definite, I have a meeting at 10 o'clock with the mayor. So, I mean, anytime after like nine, nine thirty.
Okay.
If, if you wanna talk, you wanna talk one-on-one?
Yeah, I just wanna show you a, a analysis that I did and just kind of run it off of you and see what you think.
Okay. Um, is there a time that's better for you or it doesn't matter?
It doesn't matter.
How much time do you need?
Um, maybe fifteen minutes.
All right, then let's say, uh, nine thirty.
Okay.
All right.
Roger, stop in and see me then, okay, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
I tried that today, but you weren't there.
What time?
I don't know, I think I was down about two, maybe, maybe a little earlier.
I don't know, I was, I don't know.
It was all dark in there.
What?
Yeah.
The door was, had to be unlocked, cause I didn't leave.
There's water in the flowers.
I don't have any flowers there. I'm not good with plants.
I'm sorry, dust in the flowers.
Maybe. I'm not that good with plants. Roger, I don't know where I was though.
We have everyone here, so let's get started. Uh, call the stated session of city council to order. Please stay seated for the invocation and stand for the pledge of the flag. I have the, the flag that you can salute. Heavenly Father, we meet tonight to make decisions that affect our residents. So give us the wisdom to do what is best for those that we serve. Even if we have different opinions, give us a unity of spirit. Help us solicit each other politely as others share their points of view. Help us to work as a unified team and combining ideas for a great outcome. Help us to work as a whole rather than as individuals, trying to promote our own agendas. May we have a spirit of camaraderie in this room and work together on our shared mission. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Uh, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Reddinger?
Here.
Mr. Malan?
Here.
Mr. O'Connell?
Here.
Dr. Ruggles? Mrs. Volcano?
Here.
And Mayor Panto?
Here. Approval of the agenda, please?
Move to approve.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Volcano and, and O'Connell. Any additions, deletions to the, to the agenda? Roll call.
Mr. Reddinger?
Aye.
Mr. Malan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Action on the minutes of our April twenty-eighth meeting?
Move.
Moved by Brown?
Second.
Seconded by O'Connell. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Malan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Reddinger?
Aye.
At this point, before we get to public comment, I'd like to make a couple comments myself about the American Rescue Plan, uh, granted the city got. I'm sure you all received my email on Monday giving you the good news that we were raised from two point six nine million to two, to twenty point six million. This is not money, this money does have stringent regulations that are still being developed by the US Treasury. We were on a webinar yesterday at two o'clock. Um, it was interesting because, um, I had, uh, several staff members there, including Louis and, and John Kingsley and Marat. And basically, we were all, all the mayors or two hundred and sixty people on the call and all of us had the same types of questions about the vagueness of the regulations as of, as of this date. Um, so this money does have stringent regulations, it just haven't been developed yet. It's not money that can be spent without strings attached. We don't have, all of a sudden have twenty dollars, twenty million dollars dropped down on our lap. However, it will help us restore our economy and help the less fortunate of our city. Some question my lobbying efforts for a fair allocation, but it was the right thing to do for our residents. I, along with the National League of Cities, the Pennsylvania Municipal League, and US Conference of Mayors, lobbied for more than a year and look, that local municipalities get direct funding from the federal government to ease the pain of the COVID-nineteen pandemic. And, uh, we finally did historically get that on March, in March of, uh, this year. Um, I, those same groups, as well as Senator Casey and Congresswoman Wild, and the, uh, White House Office of International Affairs, Affairs, all helped to make this, uh, grant allocation more fair. It was announced on Monday that Eastern will receive twenty million, six hundred and sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and six dollars. ARPA provided three hundred and fifty billion dollars in state funding and, and, and funding to states, local communities, and their, uh, tribal territories. These funds are used, can, will be used to fill revenue shortfalls and support the communities and residents hardest hit by COVID-nineteen crisis. Cities face the same challenges and shortfalls that I did back in two thousand and eight and nine with the Great Recession. But our insufficient funding back then caused us to make significant cuts in services to our citizens. This time, however, the federal government acted in historic manner, provided direct funding to local governments. I again wanna thank Senator Casey and Congresswoman Wild and all the organizations I said. We understand now why it's so important to be involved in these organizations. Uh, as a member of the Board of Directors of both the National League of Cities and the Pennsylvania Municipal League, I was able to do things that maybe other mayors couldn't do throughout the city, but our allocation was wrong. I mean, it wasn't that we got extra money, it's that we got the right amount of money. So I also wanna thank, um, the White House, President Biden, for his persistence in getting this passed, as well as all the congress members and senators who voted for it. We will be complying with all of the US Treasury's Department of, uh, Treasury Department's ARP regulations, which are still being developed, and our hope and intention is to go beyond that by seeking input from the public. At a public meeting which I am scheduling on Tuesday, June first of this year, which is the first day that we will be opening up our cities to the public, um, as all of the restrictions except for the masks are there. Um, I will hold that to get input from the community, to see what they would like to see that money spent on. However, it does have to be within the confines of the regulations, obviously. Um, the American Recovery Plan regulations are still work in progress, but the federal government has to provide some direction of where we can spend these funds and one, the very, the one that they tell us that we wanna do the most and which we lobbied for the most, because as you remember, the CARES Act can only be used for direct COVID-related expenses. But most of our, most of our problem with expenses came from a shortfall in revenue because we weren't, all of our businesses were closed down for several weeks, our, our tourist attractions were closed down. So the loss of revenue for four years beginning in two thousand and twenty is really important. Uh, right now, just approximate, uh, numbers, we know that, um, last year we lost about three million dollars in, in funding, and of course, you remember it was five and a half million, but we were able to squeeze out two and a half million, but we still lost about three million. And then for the next three years, we, we express, expect to lose as much as a million dollars a year. So that is the first place, and Louis will address that in a few minutes. Um, our support of public health expenditures, we can use the money to do that. We can use the funds to address negative in, economic impacts caused by the health emergency. We can aid communities hardest hit by the crisis, especially small businesses, uh, those people who are looking, who may lose their home. Uh, so, um, eviction, both in apartments and in houses, eviction, um, prevention is, is an area where we're spending a good portion of that, as well as we can provide premium pay for essential workers. And we're currently developing a plan that we will be presenting to city council on what those regulations are. Every mayor asked the same thing and there's not an answer yet. But hopefully, within next couple of weeks, we'll have an answers to what the formula is or how much, what is the maximum that you can give to those people who worked during the pandemic. Also, for, um, several of our other employees, we're looking at, we did bring them back when August the first. And you know, many people, they came back even though they may have been a little bit leery of coming back out of the house at, at a time when we, our numbers were still rising, but we did bring back everyone in August the first. So there may be a two-tier, um, where those people who work from March on, um, those people who work from August one are on different, different, um, adjustments for the stipend. But it will be a one-time stipend given to those employees who worked through the pandemic. Also, we can invest in water, sewer, and broadband. We're looking at broadband for those thirty percent of the population that don't have access to the internet. Um, we're looking for that. We're looking at, um, also investment in our sewer, uh, distribution or collection system. But our water distribution system is not, um, likely to have any money because we have a water authority that we're, we don't longer do water and we're not responsible for the water, um, distribution or distribution, um, network. One of the things that we may look at is working with, providing funding possibly to the water authority to get rid of, um, as I understand, we have no lead lines left in the city, no lead mains. But there may be a lead main in the city, in the, um, uh, homeowner's responsibility, which goes from the meter to the curb box. We may look to, um, do a program that eliminates that. Now, um, Dave Hopkins tells me that they put things in the water, uh, chemical that doesn't allow it to leach to the, um, lead. But, um, lead piping, as you know, has a very, very, uh, negative, um, impact on the health, especially of children. So we may look at something like that. Uh, I can say that based on preliminary projections of our audit and the American Recovery Plan, uh, Act, funding, there will be no need for furloughs this year. Uh, you know that we, we announced on October first, when I gave the message, that the first thing we would do is weed into that, um, budget line item, which was, I think, around five hundred thousand dollars, and now it's down to two hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars, which would put most of our people out on, most of the eighty-one people over furlough, we'd put them out on furlough again for as much as four or five weeks. So that is not necessary anymore because our audit is looking good and so is, obviously, the money can be used to prevent the, the funding because, or, or, put in the funding because the lack of funding which was causing the furloughs is no longer there. We can use the money to put back into our, um, accounts. Final allocations will be determined once the public has been heard. And the good news, however, is that we now have a fair and proper allocation to address the needs caused by the pandemic. Again, I will host that public meeting on Tuesday, June first at seven PM. So I invite all of the members of council to hear what the public has to say. But unfortunately, um, it does have to be within the guidelines. So we may take a lot of input, a lot of people are telling me what they like the money spent on, but unfortunately, I know it can be, for example, it can't be spent on, um, other than those, um, essential employees who deserve a stipend. It can't be spent like on, um, we can replace the vacancies that we have, that we can do. Uh, vacancies created that were not filled since January first of two thousand and twenty. But we can bring back our staffing, uh, which, as you know, um, we have several positions which we didn't fill, including my administrative assistant. Um, we also have, um, an opportunity to, um, not only hire back the people that we need, but also hire people that we may have to do the program. For example, obviously, we know affordable housing, and I've been working with council member Volcano on this. Uh, she's been very helpful on the Affordable Housing Program and how we prevent rental evictions. Well, let's say we have a program, we put X amount of dollars into affordable or into rental evictions. We need someone, A, who's gonna take the application, B, who's gonna review the applications and also make recommendations for who should receive the funding. I am very confident that we will be putting up a separate bank account just for this money because I am certain that it is susceptible to an audit by the US Treasury. They're not gonna audit every city, but we may, we wanna make sure that full transparency, that we are spending the money the way Congress wanted to be spent and putting it where it's most needed. So that will, that meeting will be on June first. So at this point, um, I will, Tracy, open it up to the pub, oh, I mean, any council members have anything to say. Go ahead, Dr. Ruggles.
Sorry, I, um, I, I agree with the June first, uh, public hearing. Um, but I, I'd kinda like to go a step further in, uh, soliciting input from the public. Whether that's through our website, uh, on Facebook, on Twitter, however, we can manage that so that, uh, we can gain as much input from the public as possible. I, I mean, I, I, I have to believe that, you know, we're gonna be getting lots of different, uh, like you said, uh, suggestions in that don't fit the program. But, uh, allowing more people to give us ideas, I think, will, will get us to see a little bit broader. And maybe some areas of need that we don't really recognize right now. Um, so if, if, uh, I, I don't know, I, I, I'd be happy to work with Tracy if we could do something on our website or, uh, however is most efficient to do that, but I, I really do believe that we ought to, you know, public hearings, we get people there, but not a lot of people. And, you know, there's twenty-seven thousand people out there that, you know, that can comment. And, uh, I, I think we ought to give them that opportunity.
I think that's an excellent suggestion, uh, Dr. Ruggles, and we'll add that to it. We'll put it on our, I will put it with some kind of a doodle poll, poll, or a survey or something that we can put on our, our website and all of our three social media accounts. I think it's a great suggestion.
Mayor, if I, can I, can I jump in?
I would, I would, yeah, I mean, just get ready to turn it over to Louis.
Um, I, I wanna talk about a couple, a couple things here, um, with regards to, um, Roger's comments. So we received, as the mayor had mentioned, basic guidelines. And to say the least, um, they are basic. Even on the call that we were on yesterday, it was a national call with, with, uh, with, with, I believe, the Conference of Mayors. Um, and the, in the presentation that was given was based on the initial high-level guideline. So that's what, right now, the, uh, administration's working on, um, in terms of what qualifies. And there's a lot of in, interpretation, if you will, on, on, on several of the points within the guidelines. It's like a hundred and fifty-some page document. So a couple of things that I, I'd like to bring up. Number one is some aspects are fairly clear, seemingly clear, um, where, you know, we could fill, uh, vacant positions. Um, and the mayor, uh, gave one example, his assistant. Um, and, and that was, that, that's certainly, uh, bona, a bona fide example because we didn't fill that position due to the budget. A, uh, another example which the mayor gave is loss of revenue. And there's some very specific, uh, calculations or a formula that, um, that, that we can follow. Um, what I'd like to do is present the vacancy report, um, as well as the revenue loss on paper, back to council and perhaps start going through at least the guidelines. And I, and I think, um, in two weeks, we will be able to have a, maybe a little bit better understanding. And, and in terms of, uh, the guidelines specifically, um, obviously, our, our focus, um, would be, um, just on the, uh, the areas of, um, of revenue replacement as it relates to both revenue and also vacancies. Um, and we will be able to drill down a little bit more on that. The second thing that, that, in talking to the mayor is that I wanna, want us, um, to keep an eye on, and we've always talked about this, that we would manage very closely the budget, and that's what we have been doing. And as the mayor and I talk in, uh, here in City Hall and, and I regroup with, um, with the team, you know, a couple of things are emerging that, that we don't forget. Um, in two thousand and nineteen, if you remember from our, um, audited financials, uh, we had a loss of about four hundred and some thousand dollars. Um, that was, as you all recall, primarily due some, uh, shocks that we faced in, in the fire department, specifically in overtime, for a lot of different reasons, but the end result was we had a, about a four hundred thousand dollar deficit. But that was okay, per se, um, because we had built up a fund balance. Um, as, as you all know, back in two thousand and eleven, um, city council passed, um, a fund balance, um, savings policy, if you will. Uh, S and P always cites that savings policy, it's a very good practice. And what that policy said is that in three areas, we would have a minimum saving. So in our fund balance, we would maintain a minimum of, of ten percent, always in our, in our bank account year over year. Right? You don't see that in the budgets, in the financials, in the, in the audited statements. Um, then secondly, we would have, we would keep a fund balance in healthcare and a fund balance in our, um, insurance casualty fund. The fund balance in healthcare would be three million. The, um, in, in an insurance casualty, we moved it to one million dollars. All right, the, on, the unaudited, uh, financials as of two thousand and twenty and leading into two thousand and twenty, um, pretty much wiped out both healthcare and insurance. Fortunately, due to the environment and the economy as a whole in two thousand and twenty, when we restructured our, um, our bonds, as you all recall, and then also, uh, submitted a new budget midway through the year due to the crisis, um, cutting expenses, et cetera. All of that together, um, it, it appears as if we cut expenses significantly enough that going into two thousand and twenty-one, and this is unaudited right now, there could be a potential of, um, of about a, of about a, a s- seven-figure, um, to the, uh, to the plus with regards to the savings that we were able to generate. Now, before anyone goes out and, and, and says that this was a, a windfall, I'm just reminding council that, um, there are a lot of, there's several liabilities in which we need to attend to. The other thing that happened in, um, in two thousand and twenty, as we all know, we cut back on other long-term expenses, and in some cases, we used, uh, bond money that was, um, slated, uh, for various, um, construction projects. We use that money for other construction projects. So in other words, while on the one hand, there may be, um, uh, uh, the ability to have an additional, uh, savings in two thousand and twenty due to the restructuring of it, of not only the bonds, but also then the adjustments that we made in the budget. Um, it, it may seem like it's a positive. Um, it, it's, it, it's, it just puts us back on track. Um, and then, as the mayor said, when we look at the twenty million dollars, um, already a portion of that um, will assist us to really get back on track with bringing us back to our baseline budget of, of, uh, two thousand and nineteen or two thousand and twenty before the crisis occurred. So, um, the money that we have, uh, the, the, the twenty million dollars, a portion of it obviously is used for revenue loss and, um, and, and vacancies that we have, um, here in the city. And we'll be presenting those numbers, um, to council as well as reviewing some of the other areas which I, which I, I'm hearing that council is interested in getting input from the public on how to spend those funds. Um, and, and the mayor ran through several of those areas, uh, which has to do with housing and, and nonprofits, um, as a high-level theme. So Mayor, um, that's, that's, uh, the report that I have with regards to, uh, the ARPA, uh, announcement and, and where we're going. I do have some other items, but maybe they can go under, um, administration.
When I give my report, I can call on you at the end.
Okay.
Councilor Ruggles?
Uh, I just wanted to point out, if, if, if we do a survey, as I suggested, even though we will, um, uh, most likely get in, uh, there, areas that fall outside of the guidelines of this particular funding, uh, I think it's important that we establish what some of those areas actually are. I mean, we may want to pursue some of them out of our own budget, you know? So, so getting a broad perspective, I think is going to be a good, good feature of doing a survey like this.
Yeah, the, uh, initially, when we were lobbying for the CARES Act for direct funding, they didn't get it. Um, and we lobbied this time for the, there's an infrastructure component. However, like one guy said to me over the weekend, "Oh man, maybe you, you'll be able to pave every street in this city. We'll have, we won't, we won't break streets, just like the, the, the new subdivision over in Nesta Heights." Unfortunately, that is not considered infrastructure under this act. Now, there is an infrastructure bill coming out, but under this act, it's water, sewer, and broadband. So if we dig up a street to, to put in new sewer lines, we could obviously finish the street and pave it. But, um, Wood Avenue, for example, is a street that is, um, still mechanical on top of, uh, dirt. It's, it has no stone base. Uh, that, that's, that's not a project we could do with, with ARP money as of today. Now, those, those guidelines are being worked on by the US Treasury and, uh, the US Treasury is setting up a, um, a, 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 one individual who's gonna answer those questions. So if we have a question about a project, we can call the US Treasury, the representative and, and, at a help desk and find out whether it's legitimate or not. So that'll be very helpful. Because the last thing we wanna do is, is spend the dollars and find out we owe it back to the federal government. And, um, we know that we can do the, um, rental, uh, eviction prevention and the, and the affordable housing component. We know that can be done. We know that small business, um, loans and grants can be done to help small businesses, uh, recover. Uh, but we've done a pretty good job. You know, I, I, I'm very, very proud of the fact of that, that our city came out of the pandemic and is coming out of the pandemic probably stronger than ever. That's, that's, a lot of the credit goes to city council, who's been very, very active. Um, and I know I've met with, uh, Councilman Volcano about the affordable housing that she wants to do. And, um, there's, there's, uh, a meeting next week with a, with a, a group that might do it as a third party in our city. So we're very excited about some of the things that could come out of that. Uh, unfortunately, right now, we thought with some of this money, we would be able to rehabilitate houses and buy them, rehabilitate for people who work fixing them up and then sell them to, uh, as a affordable housing program. Um, but unfortunately, uh, with the market the way it is right now, we're affected as well. We're, we're not to be able to buy those houses. So, um, you know, the, the price is too high. I mean, I don't think there's any house in Eastside that's less than a hundred thousand dollars right now. So you can't buy a house for a hundred thousand, put two hundred thousand into it, it's not gonna make economic sense. So we have a lot, a lot of work to do, but I want you to know the staff is working hard. Um, the homelessness, um, for, I, I, and, and my idea with homelessness will still go back to an addition on the safe harbor. I believe that using the money today will have a long-term effect. And once that addition's up, you know, we gave them thirty thousand dollars last meeting for their, um, commercial kitchen. Um, so I think we could, you know, if we put, if we put, if we build a homeless shelter someplace else, it's not gonna do us any good. We'd need twice as much staff and your operations will be done. Down there, we, I think we could provide, uh, an addition as well as possibly, um, a grant that will cover their, their, their operating expenses for a year under this money. So we have a lot to do. Um, we've not been able to get into Washington. Washington is still closed, unlike our city, which is fully open and will be more open in June first. But right now, um, the halls of Congress are empty. Um, they haven't been back to work since last March. They're work, all working remotely from home, of course, but they're not, you can't go down and talk people eye to eye. So again, uh, Senator Casey and Congresswoman, Woman Wild have been, and their staff, their staff, they've been great. Uh, Aaron and the Chief of Staff in, uh, Congressman Wild's office, um, Connor Capora here, I mean, they've been really helpful. Uh, we made a lot of noise and I think we were heard. Um, because sometimes the silence can be deafening, but it doesn't get you any results. So that being that, um, is there any other questions or comments from council? Well, you're right, Dr. Ruggles, and the other thing that could happen is we could find out that there's a, something that, a project that isn't covered by ARPA, but because we have the tranches of money coming in to replace revenue, once those funds or balances are, are brought back up to the level they should be, there might be money to be able to do. once those funds or balances are are brought back up to the level they should be, there might be money to be able to do those projects. So that's a, that's a good suggestion. Okay, moving on to public comment. Um we only have two people in the audience tonight, Kurt or Tybe. Either one of you have a uh question? Uh there's one press person. So if if there's anybody who wants to ask city council question or something dealing with the agenda, uh please press the button on the bottom that says raise hand. Seeing none, let's move on to the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Okay, under the consent agenda, we have a resolution which would approve an agreement with the Eastern Aquatic Club to use I O pool, and we have a resolution to apply for a grant.
I'm move the consent agenda.
Moved by Ruggles. Seconded by Ettinger. Comments? Roll call.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Ettinger?
Aye.
Mr. Millan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
And Mayor Panto?
Aye.
There are no reports to be received by council, so we'll move right into committee reports. Uh Finance Committee, Councilman Brown, Vice Mayor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Um I have no report, just a quick uh uh update to remember that we will be given a uh date coming up at our next meeting. So we'll be doing that every second committee uh month, month.
Thank you, Attorney Development Committee, Councilmember Volcano.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to tell everyone that last night, last last evening, the first meeting of the um, I guess it's considered an ad hoc committee to review the proposals that were sent in for the Pine Street Garage project of the Pine Street plot of land. Um it was held in city council chambers. Almost everyone was available, and we had many directors and uh Councilman Ruggles and the mayor were also in attendance. I just want everybody to know that when we do attend, we are just on the sidelines to answer any questions. We don't make any decisions. We don't try to influence anybody's judgment on that committee. So look forward to um meeting a few more times before we bring it all to council. They make the proposal to bring it to council, what their recommendation would be. I believe we have four of them that came in.
There's four, yes, there's four. And uh we hope to have it to council, a recommendation to council, either the last meeting in June or the first meeting in July.
I just also want to say, if anyone is down by Cheston School, please look at how quickly the um wood is going up on the mill, which is the old Black Diamond, it's starting to really take shape now. So I anticipate that's going to be done rather quickly.
Those fifty units of affordable housing will certainly help the community, the city's affordable housing program. And I want to thank you for your involvement in that committee because in that project, because that's coming to fruition very nicely after probably twenty-five years of uh John John Robbins's vision uh is is really coming about. I I really feel bad that he's not with us to see it. Down, he he's seeing that 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 those four, Dubai fours going up, so we're happy about that.
It's going to really enhance that neighborhood.
Yeah, I'm getting comments and compliments from the uh neighbors between the school, the New Cheston School, which is absolutely gorgeous.
Beautiful.
Uh the Eastern Yards project at the old G A F, General Anline Film Mill and the Black Mill across the street. Um it's really changing that neighborhood. Um Planning and Co., Councilman O'Connell, nice to see you last night at the school board meeting. Where candidates like.
I was, Mayor, I don't have a report, but I was just about to say, uh, thank you for moderating a good meeting last night among the uh school board candidates. That was the, that was a great, uh, great meeting.
It was a good, good event.
Was no doubt that the uh school board is uh, I would say, the most, I I don't want to say more important than the council and mayor, but you know, the education of our kids are is really important, and it's it holds a near, their place in my heart. But uh we're not going to change this country if we don't change the school system. Public safety, Councilman Ruggles.
I have no report tonight.
Okay, Public Works, Councilman Ettinger.
Thank you, Mayor. I I have no report tonight. I do, however, have several pieces of legislation on the agenda. Uh Bill number twelve regarding the Locktender's House and a and an agreement uh by resolution for a independent contractor that's associated with that, and also a resolution approving a job description at the, at the wastewater management office manager. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Ettinger. Uh Councilman Milan, Administration Committee.
I have no report.
Okay, reporter, City Solicitor, Mr. Shear.
I I have no report, thank you, Mayor.
Reporter to the mayor, just a couple of things. I'll give a city council update on the lifeguard situation. Uh Mr. Hopkins is on, so why don't we let Mr. Hopkins uh address the lifeguard situation in our pools, uh where we're at at this point in time.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh my understanding at this point is that the Y M C A is uh approaching the number necessary for us to be able to at least rotate the pools every other day. So the plan right now would be to do Eddy Side on even days, Hile on odd days. And uh we're still, you know, we're still kind of working on a start date. Uh we're thinking we might be ready by the weekend of uh June fifth, but um but we need to finalize that.
Okay, and uh we'll probably, not probably, we will have a um recommendation to city council about the pricing um on what we can do for season pass holders now that we know that at least it'll be fifty percent. So we can't charge them a hundred percent if we know that we're only going to collect, if we're only be open fifty percent of the time. Although the pools will be open a hundred percent of the time, I don't want, you know, it's just that people from Hile will have to go to Eddy Side, people from Eddy Side will have to go to Hile. And it's great, we're only four square miles, it's it's not far from anyone's home. It'd be great to have people uh traversing our city to go have records. Um also, uh I just want to let city council know that the mayor's summer youth camp, which I've held now for the last, uh since I've been mayor, uh is going to be delayed and will not be in July. I'm going to wait one more month in August. We'll do it the first week of um, the first meeting week of August, which is means um summer youth camp will start August the ninth. And I would ask if any, you know, any younger person, uh at least in ninth through twelfth grade, it would like to attend. Uh we're adding a day this year because we just can't fit everything in in four days. So we're going to add everything, we're going to add that Friday as well. Um and I'm still looking for sponsors to pay for that cost. Um I want to report that um we have new businesses coming to town. I just want you to know that um the pandemic, we've come through very, very strongly. Uh uh much stronger than most cities. Uh we're out there all the time, and I I'm not at liberty to announce them at a public meeting, but I could tell you that there are new businesses coming to town, uh and both of them, I think, will be very, very good for our city. Um and uh tomorrow, I'll be taping. Um the Chamber of Commerce did not want a State of the City this year, which I already delivered to the city council. They've asked me to do a community and economic development update. So uh I'll be taping that tomorrow, and uh I think it's next week at ten o'clock, one, one, one day next week at ten o'clock. Um and I would just like to uh say that when we got through COVID nineteen, those essential workers, you know, our police and firefighters were on the line. Um our firefighters, especially living in um the same building for twenty-four hours. Um we did have a number of cases, but no one stayed out longer than they had to. They were back on the job. Um our police officers were out there every day. Uh our wastewater treatment plant operators were out there every, every day. Um we can't shut off the sewers, and we can't shut off the water. So um we're very, very proud of the fact that our, the workers that we need, all of our supervisors and directors and myself, were in every day since March, um doing everything we had to do to keep the city operating and services to our uh public. Um we, you know, we had people out, we were cutting grass and lining fields and doing whatever we had to do to make sure that uh the city services were were doing. Good thing we didn't have trash collection, it's private, so that's the good news. We didn't have to bring those people in. Uh those employees were able, were not, if they were with us as city employees, they would have to furlough as well. So we're excited about that. Louis, you have anything to add to that?
Um I do, just a couple, a couple of, a couple of updates. Um number one is just want to let uh council know, I usually don't give this type of update, but because it's a major project that um that everyone has been involved with um per se, uh the Commodore, um they actually just has, have submitted their demo per- permit for a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. Um so uh it it's moving forward. So I just want to give all of you a heads up that that note came in today, so I thought that was a very positive move. The Commodore, as as you all know, is the um, the um, the the building that was purchased um by Garrett Vassal, and that building used to house the Kaplan um Honning Company. Secondly, making some progress on the I T manager position. Hopefully, we'll have um a little bit more information um for you. Hopefully, good news in the next two weeks. I have some promising interviews that have occurred. The uh with with regards to ARPA, I I did want to let you know that um I I did have a meeting with the union president um of ASME just to um let the union know that there was going to uh be no layoffs. Um and that would be announced by the mayor formally to council. So in terms of labor relations, um they're still occurring um behind the scenes, but I just wanted to make you all aware of that. Um and then the uh final item that I have on on my list um is actually uh in somewhat of an urgent item. Um I'm also going to let uh Dave Hopkins talk a little bit about it, um in more detail, rather. Um I I signed off on a work order today that is going to uh expedite or uh value engineer a quote uh to do some uh immediate work to the Pine Street Garage. Um so I, and I'm going to let Dave talk a little bit about it, but uh I'm I'm mentioning that because uh there's a potential where I'm going to be submitting uh an amendment that I need uh about a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh potentially to do some um some immediate work over at the Pine Street Garage. I'm going to turn it over to uh to Dave now, so he can talk a little bit more about it.
Thank you, Louis. Um so the department um received a condition appraisal. We've been trying to keep an eye on the garage. Um you know, it 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 is at the end of its useful service life, and you know, we just want to make sure that we continue uh to keep an eye on safety as we uh as we approach uh June of twenty-two when uh we're planning to take it out of service or or sometime that summer and maybe even after the summer. But to get to that point, we wanted to make sure um, you know, any, any items that need to be addressed are addressed during the interim to get us to that final finish line. And uh I have a copy of the report, um and there's, there's some items that will need to be addressed in the short term for us to get there, and they're estimating the price to be between a hundred and a hundred and fifty thousand. And uh and they'd like us to do the improvements as soon as possible. So that's what uh, that's what I'm working on right now. And uh today, we we asked Tim Haas, who's been our our longtime uh civil engineer on that garage to uh to put together the uh the paperwork for us to get some contractors in there and and do the work that needs to be done.
So it starts.
Mayor, that that that's my report, unless council has any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Louis Campos? Okay, or Mr. Hopkins? Thank you, David, for keeping an eye on the Pine Street Garage, it's very important. Um hopefully, within a
Band-aiding it.
Yeah, it is a band-aid, you're absolutely right, Mr. Volcano. Uh the um update on the Fourth Street Garage, it should be starting the end of the month, maybe?
Uh we have, we actually have a uh a a brief kickoff meeting tomorrow just to get that information. Um we're trying to find out when the construction fence uh needs to go up, and then we'll be able to get in to remove our existing assets that are in there, light poles and signage and and whatnot. Um and then, obviously, we want to get the precast designed in order as quickly as possible, and uh and we're still set for a June twenty-two completion at this point.
Uh Dave, just a quick question, while you're there. The precast, that's going to top, I mean, uh is that eight to ten months out, or what is that?
That's probably a good estimate at this point. We won't know until the order's actually placed.
Okay.
Dr. Ruggles?
Yeah, uh Dave, I'm I I'm concerned about uh once we close down the Fourth Street parking lot, uh there's several parking spaces there that will no longer be available. And uh I I I'm hoping that we'll be able to locate additional parking. Um I know I I've been talking to the mayor, uh you know, down on the uh block of uh Fourth Street between uh Bushkill and Spring Garden. Uh I counted probably four or five slots, places that could be added right there. And I'm sure there are many more around the city. Um I I I I just think we need to do something to mitigate the uh the loss of all those parking spots. Because I know, when you get, when you go down there on uh street sweeping day, that lot is totally full. Uh you know, if it's, if it's Tuesday or Thursday, it depends on which side of the street they're on, but um you know, it it fills right up, and you know, there's cars, you're going to have to go somewhere. Um and and I I think we need to take a real close look at how we might be able to add spots, where we can add spots, um whatever. Um but but we we need to do something, or there's going to be a lot of people that are very unhappy.
I'd be happy to look at it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. There's no correspondence, anyone else want to have any questions for Louis or David Hopkins? Uh there's no correspondence, no unfinished business, Madam Clerk, let's move right into new business.
Okay, under new business, we have the um an ordinance being introduced by Mr. Ettinger, which would approve a lease agreement between the City of Easton and Michael Raybock, and it's to um have something to do with the Locktender's House at um Humor Park.
So introduced.
Thank you. We have a resolution being introduced by Mr. Ettinger as well, approving a in, an independent contract agreement also with Michael Raybock, and that would be for monitoring the premises um around for the Locktender's House.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second on the resolution, any questions? Roll call.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Panto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Ettinger?
Aye.
Mr. Millan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
We have a resolution being introduced by Mr. Ettinger, which is a job, approving a job description for a position of office manager um in the Department of Public Works, the Bureau of Wastewater.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? Dr. Ruggles?
Yes, I I I would like to see in this resolution uh the split of pay. Uh I I I noticed in in uh Mr. Hopkins' memo that uh he said that the the sa- uh he indicated the salary would be split between the sewer authority and the city. But nowhere in any of the documentation that we have before us indicates what that split actually is. And I think we need to have that somewhere, just as a course of record, you know, it for ourselves. Um I I have no idea what it is, but I mean, I think, I think it should be incorporated at least into the resolution.
So the, you know, you you may recall, the way, the way the authority works from an operating standpoint is that uh, you know, we pay our percentage based on our contribution of flow to the facility, and right now, that's about forty percent. So we we actually, the city pays about forty percent of the salaries for those employees working in the bureau. And what we worked out with the authority to take over the duties of of uh their admin who recently retired, um they agreed to put that money toward the salary. So it's actually uh it, the split is is like more than half. So I I can give you a breakdown if you need.
Okay.
So it's fifty-fifty.
I'm 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 just not sure where all this money, uh where the money comes from, but I mean, I think, I think it's, it's important, you know.
Roger, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Um I I I I just think that it's important, if, you know, if we're not all here, if we're not here tomorrow, how how are they going to determine how much comes from who, you know? Um and and uh, you know, you know, five years from now, oh yeah, that we 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 had some agreement, but we don't, we don't have anything in writing as to what the percentages are. So um I I just think it's it's important to document that someplace.
Well, what we could do is just uh say that, you know, as of, as of the two thousand twenty-one budget, whatever, whatever they had budgeted for their existing position would now go to the new position. new position. I think that's probably a fair way to do it.
Okay. Sound cleaner.
And that way, it would, you know, it would, it would, it would then just increase as, as salaries increase over time.
Any other comments about the office manager? Okay. Moving on to
I have to do a roll call, Mayor, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, roll call.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Pinto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mr. Millan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
We have a resolution being introduced by Mr. Millan, which would actually amend the 2021 salary enragious by adding the office manager position.
So moved.
Moved in your second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Brown. Comments, concerns? Roll call.
Mayor Pinto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Mr. Millan?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
And Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
This point, is there any other business coming before city council, by any council member? Hearing none, there's a public comment on any matter before the city of Easton. Comments, concerns, or questions dealing with the city? If you want to say anything, just raise your hand, the button is at the bottom of the Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Moved by Ruggles?
Second.
Second by O'Connell, I thought you guys wanted to stay here for a while. Any comments, concerns? Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Dr. Ruggles?
Aye.
Mrs. Volcano?
Aye.
Mayor Pinto?
Aye.
Mr. Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Eddinger?
Aye.
Millan?
Aye.
So have a great day, take care of yourself, be safe going home, almost all of you are already home.
See you soon, bye-bye.
Bye, everybody, thank you.
Good night.
Night.
I feel disabled.